Okay, call this meeting to order. Let the record show that four commissioners, three commissioners are here. Littleton, head of Doc's point. Let's stand up quickly.
Our clear allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
Hi, for those of you here, the reason I put this item on the discussed cost back in the budget workback really is because some people came to me and says, "We didn't have a chance to submit our request to the court." So that's why I, there's some people that want to make some suggestions for our budget. So, one of them was Ms. Anna Smith. She wanted to, just so you guys know, she wanted to change her base pay for the first assistant from nine up to nine, to raise it to ninety thousand, and the base pay for the second assistant to sixty-five thousand. Now, I don't want to act on anything right now, but I'm just, because Monday we are going to have a two workshop and vote on things, unless you guys want to vote on things, but I suggest that we discuss it on Monday. And another one was, request was from Judge Gonzalez's office. He said that his forty-six thousand dollars from, for the probation officer was never used because that position, which was Dixie position, was actually paid by the grant, and he didn't use his forty-six thousand. So he wanted to raise the court order, which we had budgeted for fifty-two thousand eighty-seven dollars and thirty-eight cents. He wanted to raise it to the same base pay as the sixty Dirk, which is more or less about sixty-five thousand dollars. Am I right?
Yeah, he wanted to raise it approximately at twelve thousand nine hundred.
Twelve thousand nine hundred dollars?
And Judge, on that one there, a quick comment. The forty-six thousand dollars that he's trying to play with ain't really his because it was paid through from a grant. So it never was really within his budget. The only reason that, it was in his budget, but the money, it wasn't a position that the county added to be paid with, with county funds. So that money's not really his. It is a, it is a grant position. So he really can't do that.
Okay.
I've got another comment on that. Matt, is it true that you told Judge Gonzalez you could use that money?
That he could use it?
Yeah, about forty-six for, to our, for the position?
I told him it was in his budget, in his salary budget, which it is.
Yeah, because he, he told me that, that he had told me he could use it.
And, and, and it is, it is, well, like, when you look at his, his.
Yeah, but it's a one-year deal, it's not like it's, well, forty-six every year.
Well, it was forty-six. The only problem was, was that when we did the grant, that forty-six, and I think the DWI, there's another person that was in there, those two funds were actually going to be paid with grant money. We never did give them a position out of county funds. You know, so it was within his budget, but it isn't for him to spend.
Okay, another thing that he requests is to look into, see if, from now on, the participants that participated in DWI court are going to be charged up to a thousand dollars to participate. If those funds could be used to pay his, my, salary. Now, we don't have plans for right now. I'm just throwing out to court, see if they can be used.
Well, that, we, in that, Judge, we need to look into, check and see.
Right.
Within the bounds of the grant.
Right, and that's what we're, we're going to do. Before, what I'm saying is, before we answer him, we're going to look into the bounds of the grant.
Okay.
Now, if it's not his, okay.
Yeah, but, but.
That would be possible, unless he moved him out.
Right, exactly.
Now, the only thing is, though, can we charge them a thousand dollars?
Yeah, he said.
Charge them the thousand.
He had a letter from, from the state that.
It's just not a court cost.
I would, if he has a letter from the state, I'd feel more comfortable, somebody else would then try.
Now, who's going to collect all the talent if they want to go through?
He's going to be collecting it, and then we're going to capture it.
It's going to be.
So it's not going to be a court cost.
Okay, all right. Okay, now, another thing is, I think the Commissioner of Wardlow wanted to raise his base pay for his employee, and so consider that one too, I think, because we put it, I, when I put in the, the budget, we put a certain amount, and he wants to raise it. So think about that one too. Let's see, am I forgetting anything else? Matt, am I forgetting anything else before we start Monday discussing the budget?
Yeah. Did you have people wanting to come in?
Okay, anybody else? Because, you know, I don't want, after we discuss it today, after we discuss it today, I don't want you to come and say, "Well, I didn't have a chance to grieve my concern."
Judge, I'd like you to.
Yeah, I think yours already was it, was already, you're, yeah. You, you already came up to the court, just like the sheriff, and you requested that.
Can I say one thing before we get started? Just so everybody understands the position that this county's in. We have revenue of sixteen million eight hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars. We have expenses, when you look at them, they're pretty much all balanced. The only problem is, is that we were using a six hundred and six thousand, five hundred thousand, five hundred dollar bank financing to go into our revenue, which you can't do it. And then we're using nine hundred and ten thousand dollars from the West Gate to come back in here. So at the end of the day, when you look at our budget, we're a million five hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred dollars expenses higher than our revenue. So y'all can keep asking for everything, and, and I would if it's y'all's department, y'all need to come in. But we're one million five hundred thousand dollars upside down. I would suggest, before we get into, you know, everybody can come up and ask for whatever they want. But when you look at this budget, we've got two hundred and fifty-two thousand sixty dollars worth of raises, retirement, and fight in, in this next budget. If you're going to do anything at all, we, we've got to cut first. There is some talk right now that an effective rate, three point nine? What's the difference? We could raise it?
Raise it.
Our rate, our tax rate?
Yeah, we could raise it possibly, yeah, three point nine.
Three point nine. Right, Judge?
Right, yeah, the effective, we're, let me explain it. Now, our effective tax rate came in about three point nine lower than what it, where we put in the budget. So we have to consider if we want to raise our effective tax rate to three point nine.
Higher.
Higher. So that's another thing we've got to consider. That's what I was going to bring up next.
The only thing with that is, though, that, in my opinion, one of five up here, before we begin to raise, we've got to figure out where we're going to cut. We've got to do a better job, a better job with our budgets. Our revenues, for whatever reason, and, and it's, it's not our fault, I mean, you look at our revenue, what we did last year versus what we're doing this year, our revenues are down. We have statutes that are fixing to come into effect, Judge, if I'm Judge Cole, but you've said, we're fixing to lose more money there. I would strongly recommend that, you know, over the weekend, or, or members of the court take a look at maybe taking out all raises first.
Right.
And then Commissioner Nellleton would come up with, you know, we can use some of these special funds to, to help balance the budget within their own departments. And then if we need to raise taxes, we do it, but the raising of taxes should be our last, our last deal. The hole that we're in right now, we've gone, and just to give y'all an idea, our, our registration and our road and bridge, we, we didn't have any, we didn't have any money to be budgeted to move over this year. But we're going to be about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars short in our road and bridge, that we're going to have to move from our general fund, is the numbers that I was coming up with. Next year, it's about five hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars. Because our, our registration's not coming in where, where we, where we said it was going to. And when you look at our overall taxes, when you add our ad below and our delinquent taxes, we gained, what, about a hundred and some odd thousand dollars in, in collections, I mean, our values went down at the end of the day.
Correct, our social fund values for this year went down. That's why, that's why we're below our effective rate. Even if we do go through our effective rate, it's only going to raise it possibly eight hundred thousand dollars more, and we're deficient one point five.
Yeah, yes. And, and when you begin, and again, I'm not trying to scare anybody, because all this is fixable. But we can't fix it, in my opinion, we can't fix it by handing out two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars worth of raises. Twenty-eleven, twenty-twelve, twenty-thirteen, twenty-fourteen, and twenty-fifteen, in raises, and twenty-sixteen, in the raises, we handed out over a million, I think it's over a million two hundred thousand dollars in raises. Janey provided me some information, and I, when I left one of the sheets over there, but I, I know it's over a million and one in, in raises. We've gone through years here that we gave a fifteen hundred dollar raise to individuals, not a percentage, because we're trying to get the individuals on the lower end of the scale up higher. We need to understand, as elected officials in departments, we can't, I personally don't feel we can continue to do this. Last year, we gave seventeen hundred and some odd dollars plus a one percent raise, which is unheard of. We've given anywhere from three to a five percent raise, and then some of these years that we've given fifteen hundred. At the end of the day, we're going to have to cut, and we're probably going to end up having to raise taxes. But we have to cut first. I personally can't go out there and tell the citizens that I'm gonna, I'm going to, I'm going to give everybody a raise, and then I'm going to, I'm also going to raise your, I'm going to raise everybody's taxes. That's just, that's just my feeling, that's, that's, you know, it is what it is.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, and that?
Well, there'll be an opportunity for us to address the court again. You say my request is in because I did make the request.
Right.
But I just have one simple statement to substantuate that request.
We're missing a commissioner, we're missing a commissioner.
That's why I don't want to.
We're probably better off with it with everybody.
On Monday, because we're missing a commissioner. That's why I didn't want to vote on anything today. Just think about it over the weekend. That way, we don't make some, some decisions that are really not in the best interest of the county. I really want you to think, the commissioners, court, to think about what we're presenting, and then start amending the budget, or doing what we need to do on Monday. Okay? That's the whole idea of this, of this meeting today. Anybody else? I know Ms. Monday wanted increasing salaries, but.
Well, that's.
What I'm saying, right now, we're considering only a thousand dollars, but you want certain special persons getting a little bit more. At this point, I put in the budget, our, our recommendation, and see how it goes through on Monday.
Hannah Mickle, please, second to comment. Okay. In light of Mr. Owen's comments, I would like to say that I do have several positions that have been reverted back to base pay. We're holding pretty steady with our budget, and business is up. Yes, I'd love to see my bachelor's degrees making thirty thousand dollars, especially the ones that have been with us a while. I've got part-timers with bachelor's degrees. I'd love to give them nine dollars an hour. Seven twenty-five is almost insulting. I have one part-time position that has been open since before I got here, I've never filled it, and I have the opportunity to bring on a master's degree who's volunteered with us, who worked for pennies this summer, and I'd really like to be able to bring her on at twenty hours a week in the twelve to fourteen dollar range. I think having a master's degree additional in the library would be a huge benefit.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Barrera, did you want to make a comment too?
Actually, I was ill on the last opportunity. I didn't have an opportunity to place my, my.
Come on in.
And I'll be very kind. I appreciate Commissioner Owen's comments. I understand the tight spot.
And me and you have talked, I mean, I, I think if there was some funds in there that were not, and that we could use for one time expenses, not reoccurring expenses, that you could use and actually going to save us fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year after we do it, you know, if the money was there, we'd need to look at it. But stuff that's going to be reoccurring, we're already in the hole. And, and, just one more statement, I mean, we've had people come up and say, you know, come up to me and say, "Well, we've got a wind farm, I'm going to, that's going to make up the difference." It's not.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if you, if you take it all on face value, Matt's actually done some research for us, showing that it could actually, at the end of the day, five years down the line, it could hurt us. Because you plan what it is today, Commissioner Nellleton has made a comment that it's, it was twenty percent in one year, and I think what he was alluding to, that in about five years, we're about twenty-two percent the value. So we need to be real careful when it does come on, projecting to, again, where we don't end up in this situation again. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's all right, that's all right. Our, our department's fairly new to the county. I appreciate the support that the, the court has shown. I hope you agree that our department has accomplished many technology projects, and moving forward, our department is very different than a lot of other departments. I try to be a good steward of our taxpayers' dollars, as a director of our department. I'm very conscientious of what direction and what recommendations I give this court. Our department is in every other department. We're all over the county. As mentioned, I was out ill the other day, and we've had several situations where both of us are out ill. Moving forward, and if we accomplish some of these other phases of our IT plan, you won't be able to afford that. I mean, being down is just not an option. We pride ourselves on uptime. You can speak with any department head, and we, we work weekends and after hours to keep our people operating during office hours. We'll continue to do the best we can. We'll continue to give you the hundred percent we've given you now. But for your consideration, if there's an opportunity, I did submit for additional staff member. I think taller departments need probably additional. It is my duty as a director to stand here and, and ask for assistance. And I appreciate the position you're in, and I think when I first came to work here, I made a comment that, you know, it's, 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 it's a, it's a difficult place to be to make these decisions for the county and, and move forward, so, you know, I want to thank you, and, and if there's, if there's an opportunity, I wish it was considered. I can go into detail as to what we have accomplished, and, and of course, all these accomplishments and talk about would not be possible without all the, with approvals that you have given us. So I thank you for your support and your trust in our department.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
I did put in my budget for two extra firefighters. The reason I did is because on weekends, there's nobody there. And I put them in so I could man the station on the weekend. It won't be twenty-four hours a day, but it's better than nothing. Because on the weekends, my comp time on my three pay guys are mounting up high, because they're the ones that respond. The volunteers don't respond that much anymore. The main one that responds on the weekend is a county employee. I don't call his name, but he works for the county. He's only on the spot. And on the other one, I've never asked for a secretary, but I do need one. Pat's in the shape now, she can't set it to computers, she had major neck surgery. Now she's battling cancer, and, so, I really need some help to input stuff into the computers, keep track of all these records. I'm behind right now, because I've been off so long. On y'all's report, I sat down there the other day, and I figured them out, trying to get them, get them caught up myself. And it, she's done it for nineteen, almost twenty years now, with no pay.
You can call it twenty. It's worth it, yeah.
January eighth, it'll be twenty, no. Wait a minute, she started back in October of ninety-seven, the same time I did.
Yeah, so she's there.
She's, and basically, she can't do it no more. She can't set it to computer with that major neck surgery, just killed her to death. And that's the main position I really need. Now, I need all of them, but I understand the money situation. It just takes us a longer, on the weekends, to leave home, drive to the station in normal speed, because they can't speed, because cops are getting on the tickets, you know? And it, it, I've had them in it there, because it takes a long to get the trucks out of the station. We have the same problem at night, but everything's a little better. It takes third men to keep it twenty-four seven, you know? But that's, I'm not concerned.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Jerry.
All right, nobody else?
No questions.
Okay, wait, anyone?
Oh, that's good.
Pat, Pat, Pat was next.
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead.
With the legislative changes that we have had, it is putting additional work on the courts and the JP offices. We don't have room for an additional person if you funded one. So what happens is the workload just has to be divided up amongst those that are there. They all work very hard, and they are aware that their workload is going to increase, and they never complain. But I would really hope that we could at least give the existing employees a raise, the thousand dollars that you mentioned in your budget, because they are so willing to step up and do what's required, even though we didn't expect it, and we really don't have the manpower. Just please consider, our revenue's going to be down because so much of the legislation was based on indigency. And we, we have a low-income area, and a lot of people that are in our court are, are indigent, or at least claim to be, and we cannot investigate, we have to take their word for it.
You know, Judge, when I said the thousand dollars, the, you have to start where it's most evident, what comes out hits you in the face first. You know, you have to start with that cut first. And we, we spent ninety-eight thousand dollars this year on insurance, on health insurance, to keep it where it was at. You know, I had a conversation with a deputy the other day, and, you know, this conversation to me was, "Well, you need to throw us a bone." Well, you know, Judge, when I sit right here, and you look at the raises that we've given, and the amount of money that we've given over, over the last seven years, you know, with your daughter starting it, and I think it was a great thing that she did to go from sixteen to nineteen, when she put it in her budget, our, our beginning pay, and, and that got the ball rolling, so we could get our dollars up. You go back and look at other companies, what they've done, our city, our county, our city, our school, and stuff like that, we've been, I think, the most generous of, of, of the both, most, of all three entities. I'm not going to say appraisal district, but of the, of the two, of the other two entities, we've been the most generous. You know, and at some point, in my opinion, you've got to slow, you've got to slow this train down. You look at the amount of money that we gave out last year, you know, seventeen hundred and some odd dollars plus a one percent, that's unheard of. You know, we were trying to get our employees up a little bit higher, that way you get them out of the seven and eight dollar range, in that eleven dollar range. I think we've done that. And I think all our employees deserve a raise. But my humble opinion, sitting here, I can't honestly go out there and, and ask for a tax increase right now if I'm not doing my best to try to figure out where to cut expenses first. And I agree with you, we all, they, they deserve a raise, they really do. But, and it's a hard decision, but that two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars is right now what comes out and, and hits me right off the bat. Now, if you could save some money somewhere else to where you weren't a million and a half at the end of the day, in the hole, and you projected the wind farm to come in to where it sort of plugs up the hole next year, but that's a dangerous road to go down. You know? And I agree with you, Judge, they, everybody deserves a raise, yes. But I just don't think we can do it.
I agree that, you know, it's starting back seven years ago, and, you know, there were years before that, that there weren't a lot of increases, substantial increases. And yes, I, I think the gap has been closing, and it's very much appreciated, I'm sure, by everyone. But, you know, I have been in your position at the city, and I understand, you, you've got to have it coming in before it can go out. I, I understand that completely, and I know it's a balancing act.
And as elected officials, you know, and, and department heads, you know, it's your job to come up here and ask for your employees. You've got to come and defend your employees, and I, you know, I respect that. But I personally, it just scares me that, you know, that if we don't do this, and we hand out this quarter of a million dollars, it's, it's a reoccurring expense, it's, it's going to get scarier next year. You know, it is, that's just my opinion, Judge, you know.
I understand, believe me, I, I do.
And like you say, you've been here.
Yes.
Yeah, you've been here.
I've been in the seat, and I, and I understand exactly what you're talking about. But, you know, it's hard for me to, to stand there and, and watch my employees working harder and harder and harder, and faster and faster and faster. It's, it's like swirling the cage, they go as fast as they can.
And I think, Judge, well, I think, I know, I know that, you know, probably ninety-nine point nine percent of our employees within the county do a great job.
Sure.
You know, and they're going beyond what we even ask of them. I mean, they're, they're, they're putting in that extra effort. So I agree with you, they, they, they probably deserve it, they do deserve it. I just, I don't know how we get past it this year without not doing it.
I understand. You know, my concern is, you know, the state has almost, in a convoluted way, given us an unfunded mandate. They want all these requirements filled, and frankly, I think some of them are useless. But I didn't make the decision.
And, and Judge, when you look at your revenue, when, when you look at our revenue sheet, you know, we gained a hundred and some odd thousand or whatever in tax dollars, but our revenue's dropped.
Well.
You know, the majority of, the majority of them dropped, and, you know, my numbers and, and Matt's numbers are different, and he's, he's on the, he's thinking, because he averaged the last two years plus this year together, and like I told him, I'm, you know, when I did my numbers, I didn't do that, I looked at these numbers and did a percentage and added the, I had a balance out of the end of June, I added a percentage to get us to the, to the end of our fiscal year, and that number's lower than what Matt come up with. So, you know, we, we lost a couple hundred thousand dollars in there too.
The JP revenue, of course, that were not revenue-driven, but the revenue is going to decrease tremendously because we have to take into consideration.
And Judge, and we're not asking, you know, don't get, don't get me wrong, I don't, this court wouldn't ask you to go pay for, you know, like you said, revenue-driven, it's not. But you look at our overall revenue sheet, everybody in there's low. I mean, you know, we have departments that, that, that just haven't been able to collect. You know, the money's even there, it's owed to us, and we've not been able to collect. You know, they're going out and, and, you know, hunting and phone, doing phone calls and everything else, and we had a conversation last week with one of the departments, do we need to figure out how to get you some money to do more postage? What do we do? You know? And all the commissioners are looking into that. But it's, it's a hard decision. You know, and I don't think any, any one of us up here would, would not say that, that our employees don't deserve it, it's just that, at the end of the day, again, you look at what we've given in order to get them where they're at, I think right now, because in the position that we're in, we need to slow it down. We need to slow it down. That's just my opinion, I mean, it might not work, or, you know, they might not get the votes, but, you know, I, I truthfully and honestly can't vote for, for raises for the employees looking at the budget that's, that's staring at me.
Well, I just appreciate you doing the best that you can, and I've been in your position, and I know it's difficult. But all consideration is appreciated.
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry. Karen, did you have a question?
I did. You talked about the three point nine cent increase in the effective tax rate?
Correct.
The proposed sports complex would, I understand it's going to be supported by ad below on taxes. Is that, would that?
No.
That be on top of the three point nine, or?
Yeah.
It would be?
Yeah. Whatever money, at the end of the day, whatever it takes after we do cuts, you know, Commissioner Nellton has been fighting uphill road, I think, for sixteen years, you've been there what, sixteen, right? Sixteen years, and, I mean, he's always, he's been, he's the one that's been pushing the deal on the special funds. It's taken us all this time to hire an attorney, our, our counselor's actually hired an attorney for us to go over each one of the accounts, give us an opinion on it. Some of those funds, and what Nellton kept saying, is some of those funds we can use, not to balance our budget, but some of that, some of those monies can be used for other expenses. And, and we can't balance our budget with that money, but these individuals can use some of those funds, if that, if that makes sense. So there's a little bit of savings there, it's not going to be a whole lot. Don't, don't get me wrong, it's just not going to be a whole lot. Janey, is there something?
No.
Uh, you know, there is, there's stuff that we can do different, that we're learning more and more every day as we go along from, from the attorneys.
I'm talking about the bond itself.
Yeah, what, what I was getting at is, when, we have three point nine cents that we could raise, bottom line is, we could raise taxes three point nine cents without having to have a hearing.
Okay.
Okay? That is going to help balance our budget. When you go, if you're talking about a sports complex or whatever, the voters are going to decide in November if they want to vote for a sports complex, and that is going to be an additional rate. That, that answers your question.
Just, I'm sorry, you finish.
All right, I love to talk.
Before I came on board, the tax bond that we did with the library, that story's separate. But before last year, and I, I really don't understand how it worked, but for twenty-two years, the county never raised taxes.
Last year was the first time we raised taxes.
Two cents.
Two cents. But my opinion was, throughout the twenty-two years, if they would've raised it half a cent or a quarter of a cent, I think we wouldn't have been in this situation. Now, we're trying to get employees to come up with a reasonable, uh, salary, at the same time, for twenty-two years, when you have, it's impossible to raise it twenty-two cents in one year. But I didn't understand how it worked. I mean, they did, did a good job, don't get me wrong, but when you, as, as a mayor, now as a, as a city councilman, now as a mayor, and, and I, I can't understand how you can function for twenty-two years without raising the tax. Half a cent, maybe one year, you know, a quarter of a cent. But you cannot survive the, the cost of living and everything else with ever, never raising taxes.
Well, you survive by paying people that are really good seven dollars and twenty bucks an hour.
Right.
Which is ridiculous.
No, and, 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 not to say that.
Sorry, that's my opinion.
Yeah.
No, and we went, you know, Karen, we went from, since I've been here, we went from, we've gone from sixteen thousand, Laura was, when Laura was here, within her budget, she went from sixteen to nineteen thousand. We've gone from nineteen thousand to twenty-one four something, twenty-one four fifty. We went in the sheriff's office, his deputies, from twenty-four thousand to thirty thousand. We've gone from thirty thousand last year to thirty-four thousand. And now only that, we've had different departments that, in order to be able to keep the same quality of individuals coming in that had just left, the court has made the decision to hire some of those individuals at the same salary versus not going back to base pay. So, I really believe that the court as it was before, uh, the court before that, they've done a good job with salaries. We've gone from seven something, eight something an hour, to right now, if you come in starting, it's eleven dollars an hour. Could it be better? Yeah, of course, it can always be better. But I'm gonna sit up here and defend us, because I think we've done a damn good job, uh, with what we, I'm not even gonna say with what we have. We've done a damn good job getting our employees from seven, eight dollars an hour to eleven dollars an hour.
Okay, thank you. All right, okay, Mr. Sosa, go ahead.
Uh, well, hopefully, uh, if you don't do it this year, I'm just here to ask for reconsideration for exempt status. Uh, my job requires that I work weekends, evenings, days, nights. Uh, I travel on Sundays, I travel on Saturdays. Uh, I'm trying to make it work with a forty-hour, I'm working very hard, okay? However, I do, my job requires me to do a lot of things, not only with the county, the city, the state, the VA, national. I've worked with everybody. Uh, I have turned down a lot of invitations, because I can't make this, because if not, I will go over my time. I was told I cannot work overtime. So, it's just something to reconsider, that's all I'm asking for.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else?
And in his department, I will, uh, on his behalf, say that his numbers have gone, uh, almost every year that he's been here. I mean, it's, it's, it's unbelievable.
Okay, nothing else? This is me, Mr. Jurgen.